Welcome to the Monday August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three North City Council meeting. I know all council members are here in the presence. We always start the meeting with a bunch of legion, so I invited this gentleman to join us.
Welcome to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for that. Next on this is the approval of the agenda, the consent agenda, and we'll take one vote to approve all that. And before we go now, go through the consent agenda. So if anybody wants to take anything off of it, just take your hand or take off. Would you like to?
I'll take care of it this evening. I move to accept items number one through seventeen as, or I'm sorry, one through fifteen as is adding item number eighteen, next work session draft agenda.
Any other thoughts?
No thoughts. As long as staff didn't have anything to add on eighteen, I'm fine with it being a consent.
I didn't have anything to add. It's all written there.
Okay, so a quick add to the consent agenda tonight is number one, the City Council meeting minutes of July twenty-fourth. Number two, the City Council Work Session minutes of July twenty-fourth. Number three, claims and bills. Number four, approval to hire Alicia Johnson, resource management technician. Number five was approval of rental licenses. Number six is approval of the annual gun club permit. Number seven is approval to accept nomination, residents of Falcon Point, Mount, resolution number seventy-three eighty-nine, thank you residents of Falcon Point. Number eight is approval to accept nomination of the Menetica Beach Civic Association, resolution number seventy-three ninety, thanks also to the Menetica Beach Civic Association. Number nine is authorization to accept Julie Kanak resignation. Number ten is approval to amend wage scale for James Nelson, a utility worker. Number eleven is liquor license violation on golf course. Number twelve is approval twenty-twenty-three bridge flood ceiling. Thirteen is LA twenty-three dash thirty-two, Paul School, two fifty Tomca, Allen, variance, resolution seventy-three ninety-two. Number fourteen is LA twenty-two dash sixty-eight, Margaret Lisa Austinson, twenty-eight fifteen Castle Point Road, after the fact variances, resolution seventy-three eighty-seven. And number fifteen is LA twenty-three dash thirty-three, Edwin and Tracy Steffensen, five fifty-nine Park Lane, average and Lake Shore set back variance, resolution number seventy-three ninety-three. And number eighteen is the next work session draft agenda. Anybody in the audience want any of those taken off and sent tonight? Any objections? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no good access, fire is sealed. There's anybody who'd like to take a moment to leave for all that? It's a very good time. Okay, let me bring this to the community developers report number sixteen, which is LA twenty-three dash thirty-four, Matthew and Suzanne Johnson, ten fifteen Wilders Trail, final plat of Wildwood, of Wildverse Forest, resolution seventy-three eighty-eight. None.
I don't have a presentation this evening. We do not have a side lock consent. Mr. Johnson himself recused himself. It is a two flat, final plat. They've met all preliminary plat conditions and staff sort of made approval.
Any questions for?
I don't have any questions. I got my questions answered last time. I don't have anything further.
Yeah, as I said, would have been consent, but Mr. Johnson couldn't afford to consent items at this time, so. Any motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number seventy-three eighty-eight attached as exhibited.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no access, force of will. Okay, uh, community members, recorders, floor up.
Yes, good evening. I don't have a lot for you today. I did get an address, the building permit, revenue files, I did not keep those up back. Yeah. So this is a comparison with the yellow was from twenty-twenty-two and the purple is current with twenty-twenty-three. As you can see, we are ahead of what we were doing last year slightly, but still ahead, so it's all good news. And we are busy in the department processing those permits and doing those inspections. And we are also have quite a few lady's applications submitted. I think we had eight or nine this last one, so we're working through those applications. We are busy with permits, as you can see. And then we are also continuing to proceed with taking on our subject certification. So we have moved to a phase where we are doing infield, our building official, doing infield inspection cranes, and she is included in her classes. So all good news and moving along to that certification.
So what is that? I can't read it. What is the purple number at this point?
There you go.
There you go, because I couldn't read it at all. And what is our, I don't want to rattle out, and what's our, what do we budget for the year? If we're at four, what do you bring now?
Uh, we budgeted five sixty-five.
Okay, so hundred and sixty-five, and we got August and regular number seven, five months.
Yeah, last year we exceeded revenues for over budget, so we're at a last year, I think we'll probably exceed revenues.
Yeah, that's all good news. Just correct me the numbers of your years. You win my glasses on the quarter.
That's a good thing.
But that's been this year, a lot of the backlog, everything on keeping everybody busy, and I'll be permitting to be able to get the other licensing bill due to subjects and all too. So any other thoughts for the other government? All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, I'll run this over to Ron in the finance report, another subject he has taken over from his floor. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman. This is
the second quarter financial report. It's the first time of the year that we actually have some solid numbers going on. The first quarter, the one is winters are slowest month, so. So we will amaze you with our great performance here, at least on the revenue side, on the revenue. You can see, I highlighted the important numbers from the city taxes halfway through the year. We're at fifty point eight-six percent of budget, so we end up the year with a hundred percent of the property tax collected. Sometimes exceeded a little bit just because there might be domain of taxes or some taxes and some penalties and interest that get added in there. But so that's, since that's about half of the general funded revenue budget, that's a very good sign. You're right on track on that one. Licenses and permits were at sixty-eight percent for the year. That's part of that has to do with the building permits that we were just talking about a moment ago. Charges for service were at seventy-seven percent. I would give one disclaimer, we have received the entire payment from mound before the year, so we will not need way over budget on that line item, or we'll be pretty much at a hundred percent of budget. It's just at that high number because we've received a hundred percent of mound's payment. And golf course were at fifty-one percent, which, you know, for a fifty percent year in the year, but the golf course is not exactly lining up nice with the calendar year. What you don't know, a month ago, I told you that the golf course had had a record month. Well, they beat it in July, and those July numbers are not shown here. So the golf course revenue is probably won't be far at sea budget and probably set another record for revenues. So that's, that's the good news. Revenues are at fifty-nine percent. Like I said, we probably exceed the revenue budget again. The one account up there, the third line other governmental looks like it's lagging. What that really is, is we receive a lot of state grants later in the year, so in October, we will receive police state aid, and that will bring that number way up, just that one receipt by itself. And fines were at thirty-eight percent roughly. That's lagging a bit, probably only have fines recorded through the first four months, because we always get them after the month of stuff. So, as I said, the revenues are in really good shape, and we can go to the next slide. And this is just, you've seen, those of you who have been on the council for a while have seen a version of this slide often. It just shows the last five years, the previous four years of revenues compared to this year. You can see we're still following that very familiar trend. Little low in the first quarter, up close to sixty percent the second. Third quarter will be a little slower, and that's only because tax settlements come in June and December. So that's, that's when we get the big jumps in June and December. But we're on target to be a hundred percent plus for revenue, so that's, that's a very good. We can go to the next slide. This, this slide, a little more yellow and red on it than we would normally like to see. The good news is a lot of the yellow ones either have revenues offsetting the overage that we may have, or they're very small budget items, and that's part of the reason a very small event can cause that budget to go over. So we can start with just bare council. We're at sixty-one percent of budget. We will probably end up over budget in America, and some of that's just due to higher than budgeted training. Training's a good thing, so. But we didn't budget as much as most utilized. Law and legal services, we're trending a little over budget. I think I'm trying to throw my friends horn here under the bus. That's actually, as, as we've heard early and often this year, that has to do with some lawsuits that are, are, the number of lawsuits that some people have decided to bring to the city, and that is actually pushing that item a little over budget. Central services, we'll have to watch that one closely. I know some of it has to do with gas and electric. And, you know, we've been through a cold, long, cool winter, which is heating. It's been very warm through, you know, June, so, so we'll see where we end up, but we'll watch that one close. All of the expenses in that, and central services, once they are not level throughout the year, so we'll, we'll see where we end up, and we'll have to watch that and see where the overages are going and how to control them. Human services, looks like it's going to be over budget, but we've made the one big payment. At some point, the school will build us, and their bill is normally twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars. So we will probably be around budget for that line item. Fire protection, seventy percent, we're going to be over budget on that. A big chunk of that, if you remember last spring, we got a forty-six thousand dollar overage built to us from Long Lake. And then there's some expenses. When we set up this year's budget, we had James's, the police, or fire chief's wage and benefits in there, and some training in there. We're just running into some, setting up our, our fire department, you know, not huge amounts. We're docking three, four, five, six thousand dollars range, but, but we will be over budget on that one. Engineering, we are already over budget, and the one simple reason for that is we're spending more money on GIS than we've been budgeting. We've been talking about that during the budget process here, thinking about whether or not we need to increase that. But it costs money to get all of our information into our cargo grans. The end result will be much more efficient, better, be better able to provide data for citizens, but, but it is expensive in the, at the front end. And once again, that's a very small budget compared to ten, you know, almost a thousand million dollars. We're talking about a twenty thousand dollar budget, so. We can go over that budget line a little bit and still, still be on target for expenditures for the year. Public Works Spring Park, we're at fifty-four, I mean, five-three percent. There was, I'm going to say there was a budget in the air last year, and that we didn't allocate some of the water department's wage to the Spring Park line item. The water department wage was calculated in the amount that we set for the revenues, so. That, that's one of those that, yeah, it's looked like it might be a little over budget, but in reality, we're fine with revenues and, and expenditures. We just met the Spring Park a couple, a couple of weeks ago to go over sort of a look factor, and we're all happy with the revenues collected and the expenditures we're having. And then down there towards the bottom, special services. Once again, this is a revenue line item that has, expenditure line item that has revenues offsetting it. Just, just on this AP, if you look, there's ninety-four thousand dollars worth of payments to various cities that has to do with the Torrance or Beth grant. It's, and that's just, we have more agencies involved, we're the lead agency, and we have more agencies involved this year than we have in the past, which means we have to pay out more money to those agencies, but all of that money is reimbursed by a state grant. So we will be over on the state grants other when it comes to Torrance or Beth, but we're also over on expenditures, but they, they sort of balance themselves out, but on paper, it says, oh, we were over on this, this department, but it's not a concern at all. And you can see the bottom line, we're at about fifty point four-seven percent of budget for the year, and that's pretty much where we'd like to be. So I'm not worried about the overall budget. We just have those, some of those line items that bear watching or probably over budget, but like I said, most of those line items have offset, offset revenues, or they're very small budgets that just the smallest, you know, six hundred dollars, maybe certainly you're five, five percent over budget, but it was only a six hundred dollar expenditure, so it's not a big worry. That's all I have on the expenditures. And so this is just a little bit on our investments. The investment portfolio for the operating with the, is invested, or unused, not unused, or, mind's blinking, but our inactive funds, as in we're not spending at this moment, are all invested in CDs or some government bonds. And you can see, we use three different brokers, and then we have a forum fund we can invest in. And we currently have fifteen point seven million dollars invested. And the interest rates we're, we're receiving are off to the right. You can see they range from a low of point two percent, or twenty, point two percent, to a high of five point three percent. And what that shows is, and we talked about this a little bit at the first quarter report, interest rates at the horizon, so that point two, well, those were about three years ago, and point two actually was a horrible return on an investment three years ago. Those actually pretty much all mature here in April, so that the money will be April of next year, a lot of it will be reinvested at some higher rates. And then you can see, we do go up to five percent, four point five percent. Those are investments that were bought earlier this year after the rates increased. And then you can see the forum operating fund, that's basically a money market. We can get five point three percent in a money market at the forum, a hundred percent liquid money. On one end, it's like, why, why would I invest it for a year when I can get five point three percent just having it completely liquid? And then the, at the bottom of the slide of the forum construction, that's the bond money being used for the public works building and for some fire department renovations, and that's also in the forum fund making five point three percent. The good news and the bad news is, we don't get to keep all the five point three percent on the forum fund. There's something called a retrograde of the IRS does not like us earning more money on idle funds than, than we're paying the bond owner, so. It's got a great break on the bonds, so we will have to give some of those earnings back. Go to the next slide. And that's just the actual interest that's been paid this year. So you can see, hundred twenty-six thousand dollars of the operating money. And then on those forum construction bonds, we've actually made a hundred thirty-eight thousand so far this year. We made, I think, over three hundred thousand last year, so we've made a lot of million dollars on that. I think we can only keep three hundred sixty to four hundred thousand of it. So we, we will have to give some of that back, but it really looks good on a presentation, so. And that's all I have tonight. I, as always, you know, you're packing up much more detailed information than ever. Anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to talk in great length of finance.
Any questions for?
Ron, I didn't want to interrupt you on that other slide about expenditures, but can you go back to the slide on fire, the overage there? Can you just explain again the overage there? You mentioned a, a bill from last year.
Yes, we received a bill for forty-six thousand dollars in April that related to the twenty-twenty-two fire.
And that was unexpected?
It's not uncommon, maybe, to, some, some years we get a little back from the formula, some years we have to pay a little bit to the formula. Forty-six thousand was a much higher amount than anyone would have ever expected.
If I'm, right, we just talked about it at the budget meeting, but it has to do with the calls. So if they, they budget for a certain number of calls, if there is over, that's what happens.
So simply for overage and unexpected call volume?
Yeah, based off of the budget Long Lake provides.
Without any learnings?
Right.
In the same time, not really.
Right, it was, it was a shock to get that in.
So calls went up so significantly with, that it resulted in an overage?
Yeah, calls were a big part of it. There were some overages, I believe, on electrical and gas in that year, which they're adjusting in the twenty-twenty-four budget. There was some overages in training. Those were offset by a, a grant. So I mean, there's, there's always, but calls, I believe there was the highest calls in, was it five years, six years?
It was, okay, so it was paying for services that we received?
Right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ron? All right, so Ron, appreciate it. Okay, next is our public comments. It's not a duty for the public to address the city council. Also, we're not engaged in discussion or take action on items presented at this time. What will the council may refer to staff for follow-up or consideration in a future meeting. Speakers should state their name and home address at the podium before speaking. The council will first open the podium to the city of Long Lake residents, before opening the podium to any member of the public who should address the council. We have three minutes, and our time limit is at an hour here. Is there any one of our residents who would like to come up and speak today?
Nancy Brennan here, forty-one eighty-five, comment on Sixth Long Lake, is my mainline address, I'm sorry, City of Long Lake. I, I realize that the mayor has made it clear on at least two occasions that he feels he doesn't need any further input on the fire department issue, stated so publicly twice. I'd like to know a little why the Long Lake Fire Department Advisory Group report has been placed behind or after the ordinance. Is that a purposeful choice on your part to keep the public from commenting tonight further on the fire department? Optics matter. This council has lost a lot of trust in the community around this issue of the fire department. And I find this just one more little puzzling choice on your behalf, when you could be working to help people understand how we got here and why.
Any other one of our residents would like to come up?
Hi, Jamie Delaney, thirteen fifteen Woodco Avenue. I'm here to talk about the League of Minnesota Cities, the law that was passed on managed natural native landscaping permitted in cities. And wondering if there's any of our ordinances that need to be changed. They say the league recommends that cities and their trades review their local codes and ordinances to determine whether they have contradictory policies on books. Has there been any discussion about that? And then secondly, has anyone considered, or can we talk about on an, on an agenda item, joining the Green Step City program, where they have twenty-nine basic, twenty-nine basic steps for cities to follow for conservation, climate change, land teams, new buildings, green buildings, and all that? I'd like the city to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one of our residents tonight? Does anyone, or is there any other residents from other cities that would like to come up? Oh, somebody coming.
Hi, my name is Kelly Grady. I live at two seven one Green Hill Lane in the City of Long Lake. I just spoke before about fire, and I'd like to mirror the comments a moment prior, where I do think that moving public comments around on the agenda comes off as shitty, and doesn't really allow us to participate in an open dialogue with the council if everything is being discussed after our public comments. So I would like to continue with my question that there is a, still a fundamental lack of understanding about what fire service problems are trying to be solved with a new fire department. And I'm asking again for the council to elaborate on what those problems are. Additionally, that the, twenty, in twenty-twenty-three, the Long Lake Fire Department responded to three hundred and eleven calls in Orono, which is a population of roughly eight thousand people. By comparison, the city of Clemeth, which is a population of eight thousand people, has a similar duty crew and gang structure that Orono just voted for to push through. Their number of calls are roughly twenty-three-hundred calls per year. And I'd like to know how just, how Orono can justify a need of a very similarly structured and sized department for the call volume that's coming through. Additionally, um, let's see here. In, one of the things I thought was interesting that I just recently learned was that in September twenty-twenty-two, the Orono City Council approved roughly a five hundred and forty-three thousand dollar, five hundred and forty-four thousand dollar budget for operating costs, but a zero dollar capital improvement budget for twenty-twenty-three fire service. I'd like to understand a little bit more about how you are going to manage and create departments that will be run very similarly to the way that is run now, and not increase taxes. That does not, that math does not seem to add up. When will Orono be providing a detailed budget about the new department? I was at the last meeting, and it is my understanding that there is no real clear understanding of what a temporary fire department is going to cost to put together, that you do have a three point five million dollar estimate for a new fire department, but that still does not include many of the code, in, the code, I'm not sure the word, but it does not allow for a lot of the code, whatever, for, for the, to make the department a full fire department, so that it was not a full and complete budget that was presented. So when will it be included, that includes those code restrictions or permits? Uh, let's see, does overstating financial responsibility? I'm going to pass that question. And then additionally, too, I understand that you are still in litigation with Long Lake Fire, and yet there continues to be recruiting efforts that are going out to Long Lake firefighters, and I understand that that is a violation of the injunction. So I'd like to understand where that, how that is being managed, so that it is not going to hurt Long Lake firefighters. And, um, thank you for that. Thank you so much.
Any other people who would like to come up today?
Chelsea Weider. I think I can answer the last question she had, and that's because apparently Mr. Maltz's lawyer says it's okay. So I guess that tells what the judge says, but I don't know, not a judge, not a lawyer. Mr. Grothby. Oh, you look at me today, I appreciate that. And a few things to say to you, if you wouldn't mind looking at me, because I am being respectful. And I'd like to remind you that you work for the people, not for yourself, Orono residents or not. You are a public servant, so there is that, but I guess if you want to do like that, go ahead. Um, you say you're attacked on a constant basis, which is untrue. You appreciate the votes and comments, which is untrue. You say you're attacked on a constant basis, which is untrue. You appreciate the votes and comments, which is untrue. And I'm going to respond to insults and craziness. Well, it's not insults when we're asking questions, will you clarify? Have you been an Antifa member or a Proud Boy member? Well, you said that you said in October that you were worth a Proud Boy member, so I'm guessing probably before you were. And you never said that in any meeting. You rolled your eyes and you just tried to figure out what you got out of it.
Objection, residents.
Seriously? Why me? Anyway, so I looked at what you said, yeah, keep rolling your eyes and look what you said that you would never, you said you were never in the Proud Boys. That never happened.
Defamation.
October, you didn't?
Oh, hi Claire.
Defamation.
October, you were only here for one of the meetings. And that, you talked about how you were door knocking with your eyes and how fun it was. September, you didn't say anything about it. Neither did you in November. So now that you just did, over a year later, I'm guessing because you finally figured out what you got out of it. But, just a guess. Um, and for your respect for the people of Orono, you'd like to go off and, you know, be a big Billy badass over there. So if you really want to work something out, chat afterwards so you can have your respect for the forum.
Thank you. Disgusting.
Anybody else who'd like to come up tonight?
Just shut up.
Hey.
Yeah.
Don't speak that way, ever.
Don't have to speak like that.
What are you doing in the soup balls?
I, I think.
This is our time. It's not your time. Do you want time to come up?
Your intimidation does not work on me, whatever.
Go away, please, go away.
You go away.
Rannick since twenty-four eighty-five, Independence Row, Independence Minutes.
Which is the taxes you are.
Let's talk about Nazis, let's talk about Nazis.
Defamation.
Yeah, defamation, let's talk about defamation. I'm one of those people that decided to bring a lawsuit against this mayor and this city and this council member. And there's very good reason for that. And you guys are going to pay. You could have settled it. You guys got the best interest of the taxpayer's money, of the citizen's money. Why didn't you apologize? Let me tell you how this works. We make a deal. You apologize and I forgive you.
Now you're frightened.
I have brought you a gift. I think you should read it. They don't teach this stuff in St. Louis Park, huh? It's the diary of Anne Frank, a fourteen-year-old girl who lived a half hour from my grandparents, who was taken from her hiding place and murdered. Murdered by the Nazis. And you want to bring them into this room, into this chamber, into this city, into this community? You are disgraceful. You are a criminal, as am you. What about this Proud Boys stuff, huh? I'm glad you finally said it. You ain't said nothing about it in how many months? And you want to say you said something in October? You didn't say shit about it. And now you say I'm not a Proud Boy member? Were you? What were you doing? Answer the questions. You guys have got to figure this out. This is not going to go away. It's not going to stop. I don't care where I live. I live down here front and center every day in your godforsaken town that's run by idiots and imbeciles. Who puts this shit out? Who? The mayor of this town? Give me a break. You are lucky. You are lucky. We live in a civilized society because you would have problems beyond your comprehension. Do you understand that? You are lucky. You are lucky. You and your Mr. Trump wannabes, freaking BS, whatever. I hear he now is invoking the Holocaust too because he thinks his prosecution is akin to that stuff? Give me a break. Give me a break. He will not be re-elected, nor will you, or you, period. You guys are done. You're finished. This is getting worse before it gets, you think it's funny? Big bang? You think this shit's funny?
Yes, it's funny. Yes, it is very funny.
Yeah, you guys think it's funny?
Did you sir, did you lose people in the room?
Yes, we did. Did you, did you, yes, we did.
Did you sir?
Thank you Brad.
Did you lose?
What's it up to you?
Because we did.
I don't give two shits.
Of course you don't.
You don't hear from you. Did he send that shit to you?
You don't even think that's here.
You, 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 about you.
Excuse me, Greg.
It's not my fucking story. Keep swearing, I'm here for somebody else.
Yeah.
Keep swearing. Not you.
Classless.
Claire Merritt, twenty-five grown old, south in Orono. I, I've read that book.
Good for you. Adam?
So, residents.
Who said that? I said this time's over. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, residents of Orono, we've been putting up with this for far too long.
Over a year.
I said residents of Orono.
Over a year.
Um, our, our, our police officer's been handed a definition of disorderly conduct. And I think it's probably pretty clear at this point that over the last many, many, many city council meetings, they have violated that statute. That we don't have to take this. We really don't. It's disgusting. I'm all for public discourse and agreeing to disagree and having civil conduct. What happens here is not civil conduct. It's abusive to our process, it's abusive to our elected officials and to our city staff and to anyone else in this room. We don't have to take this. So here's my promise. I will continue to attend meetings and participate in the civic process. And I will, if called to, in my heart, I will say words. The moment that these two non-residents, if they are so inspired, come back and speak up here and participate in disorderly conduct, which is pretty predictable, we know you will.
Yes, I will.
Then I am going to leave and suck their oxygen out of this room because they don't deserve an audience. They do not deserve, you do not deserve our time.
We're not here so. We're not here.
And nobody cares about your penny disagreements. So if any of you are agreeable to that, let's just leave.
Yeah, go now. Yeah, bye.
I, I continue to be proud of all of our elected officials and appointed officials and city employees. Thank you for all you do and thank you for putting up with that. And we're going to try and help you get out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Anybody else who'd like to come up tonight? See, nobody else have proposed public comments. We'll move right into our council committee reports. The first one is number nineteen, is the Long Lake Fire Department Advisory Board that met in the earlier.
Earlier. I'll get that over and I'll take it.
Sure, don't worry.
Thanks. Um, so I was in attendance with the chief and Adam and Ron and council member. We were, Richard and I were there for, well, this was my second one. I had it lined. Um, unfortunately, there wasn't much to report, so if you were looking for something. Chief Mike didn't come, unfortunately, wasn't able to attend. And instead of canceling or postponing, we didn't really get much information, so I wish I had more to report. Um, but unfortunately, he wasn't present and an assistant chief didn't come, so we didn't get any updates. And unfortunately, I'll just have to wait till the next meeting for that one. Um, we did talk a little bit about duty crews, but nobody at the city administrators, that's not what they do. Um, and they couldn't provide any feedback, they couldn't provide any updates. Um, so, um, I think the other cities there agreed that we need to know more before we can approve a budget or talk more about that. So, um, yes, we'll just have to wait for next meeting. Um, they did bring an amended budget from their first version. Um, their second draft was really nice. It did take our suggestions that we discussed in our first meeting. Um, things like the overages from last year were discussed. Um, and we talked about that again, how after COVID had they, they make the budget, so that's how that works. And then we approve it based on their input. But there were, after COVID, obviously, numbers were hard to predict. Um, so they talked about that a little bit more. Um, but that, they need to make some amendments. Um, there were still some missing credits that were not in the budget, a couple of formula things, um, and some numbers that they wanted to change, so I guess. My takeaway is really no update. Um, we're going to wait for Chief Mike to be present soon and then more.
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of updates. Some of the discussion I wanted to, hourly wages and how badly where Long Lake was compared to some of the metro cities and so forth. We discovered that, um, the salaries were sort of falling below the average. We had some information, I think, once mentioned that the information was improper. It was judging fire officer pay compared to firefighters. But I had made a proposal, um, well, I know we still have to iron this out and discuss it on committee, but to be reasonable, hourly wage to about fifteen sixty-five an hour. I think the City of Long Lake wanted to roll that back to about fifteen fifty, but I'm going to probably just stick with my fifteen sixty-five an hour to keep it more competitive in the marketplace. I don't think, you know, being a former firefighter, for ninety-nine percent of them, money is not the object, but, uh, I think it's also important to have their pay, um, consistent throughout the community and be more on par with other agencies. And I think the real was pretty much on board with me with that, uh, to make sure we're making, you know, the Long Lake's paying a competitive wage, i.e. we are. And, uh, as we do Orono Fire, we will also, you know. But I thought it was a good meeting and it was, it was like Murray said, it was unfortunate. Mike wasn't there, he was able to make it, but we also were willing to reschedule another one fairly quickly. So I think we got one set, set up in a couple of weeks now, three weeks, I think.
Yeah, September. They had said really quick that they were going to get one and I was, yeah.
Yeah.
September though, so.
Overall though, I thought it was very positive.
Could you just clarify again what you said the hourly wage was, or did you mention?
I think it was at thirteen.
Thirteen. So during the meeting, it started at thirteen is where they were at. Um, they came in and said they wanted to go to thirteen fifty, um, but then right at, towards the end of the meeting, um, Charlie, um, Mayor Charlie had a piece of paper that wasn't part of our package, um, but that showed that wages and in the duration of the meeting, um, represented it and then just mailed it out after the fact, I think, for us to review. So again, it wasn't part of the meeting.
But that's the increase that you're talking about too, more competitive, what you said was.
Yeah, more dependent. I'm saying fifteen sixty-five is right, like this. It doesn't mean that's going to be where it's at. I think we all have to come to an agreement within the group. Um, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
So that was the meeting?
That was, that was some of the major discussion. The other part was, um, you know, them understanding, us understanding duty crews and the need and so forth. And I think for the most part, you know, things were pretty focused.
Just to be clear, the second budget that they presented us at this meeting, um, didn't include anything about the thirteen fifty. Then mid-meeting, even though that was what they presented, changed it. Um, so we're going to need a third draft of the budget.
Yeah. So they drafted budget at thirteen fifty and then during the discussion, they brought it up, they acted, you know. Why, I think it was.
But more, I guess there's really, that's where I'm saying, not a whole lot of information without Chief Mike to tell us what the area is doing without hearing how duty crews are, how staff they are, really hard to make a budget.
It's not that against Scott. I think Scott tried to do the best he could.
Absolutely, he did.
Without having Mike, Mike there.
Is there a reason that meeting without the chief there?
We asked that, because we didn't find out until we arrived that he was going to be there. Um, it sounded like some, an emergency came up, which that's, obviously that happens. So, um, but, but, because we all, everybody in the room said we would have postponed, had we not.
I think what I'm going to push in our minutes or any type of notes taken for these?
So there, Long Lake, last time we asked, for the last meeting, I had the date of, actually, maybe a few days before the Proud Boy meeting. So it took about thirty days for them to take it less. So, but Scott, I'm sure would have them.
Long Lake, Long Lake does record those meetings and sends it off to a third party to transfer.
How do we then, is it through you then, that we would, or do we need to contact Long Lake?
We get copies of them and then put them in our, in our records now that they started doing that. So we could, yeah, just reach out, reach out to city clerk and we could get copy of those. They get mailed out to members of the.
Yeah, maybe you could put it in our, your weekly update whenever it comes.
Sure.
I have a question for you, Weezer.
No, I just said that I mean, you'll help, that's all, thank you.
Uh, okay, so are we, is there duty crews right now?
So that's what we talked about, um, because there were some amendments. So the, the previous meeting, we talked about duty crews and everybody was on board. Duty crews is, uh, it's great for service times and it's great for booking, it's a win all around. Everybody was in agreement. They, um, provided the first draft at the last one, but even during the meeting, there were errors in their, um, kind of in their calculations, in the format, how it was written, how it was going to be executed. There were things that were, um, they said what the duty crews going to do if they're not answering calls. Um, and that still wasn't provided, that, those were all the things that this next meeting was going to provide us. Um, and without Chief there and nobody had his notes, um, we don't know. Um, there, from what Scott knew, Scott and John had said, they thought all the weekend, what, like weekend shifts weren't part of our initial package, so it was presented as a five-day-a-week. Um, we were told it's a six-day-a-week now. No information on how many shifts are filled, there weren't information on, sort of, like any times, there weren't tracking. They don't know, that wasn't right yet.
The Saturday piece of it was a little surprising for us.
Yeah, well, it just wasn't part of their first round.
Yeah, they discussed the Monday, Friday daytime deal.
But are they doing some work currently?
They are, but they couldn't tell us, um, only Chief Mike has that information. Like Scott, would you have the sign-up information for how many shifts have been filled? Is it, um, John, I think, had said he thought thirty percent of shifts were filled, so. Um, because I said it'd be really nice to see what the next month looks like to make your budget projections, so we could kind of not have overages next year. Um, and without that, not knowing any numbers, it's really hard when that's, it was a, I mean, their, their initial ask was over a hundred thousand. Um, and then it went, well, in twenty nineteen was, I want to say three hundred thousand when they first asked duty crews. Then it went down to, and that was including uniforms and some other things. And then it went down to, um, at their public works, they talked about the team, fifty thousand, I contacted that, or at their, um, um, work session, sorry, fifty thousand, I talked to Scott and was like, those, what you said and how you were going to pay didn't have that by the meeting. It went to eighty thousand and now with their calculations with six days, it looks closer to like a hundred and twenty. But making a budget, we're, we're responsible for it. Um, in the end, it's really, we need some framework numbers, so it's really important to have Chief Mike there. Get that, because otherwise, we agree to a budget that isn't going to happen and we're liable, we're responsible for the overages.
Well, we're only agreeing until we agree to, I mean.
No, we're responsible for the overages.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I think, I think we need to be, I would be cautious about indicating that we're somehow without agency in this relationship, that's all. I did want to ask if there's anything that the, um.
Oh, what?
Agency. So that I wasn't firm in that.
Well, I, I just mean, what I mean to say is the idea that we don't have a say in what's happening.
Oh, I didn't say that at all. I just said the numbers weren't ready for us to have a say.
Okay, so, yeah. Um, is there anything that, I understand the chief wasn't there and that happens. Um, but with the city administrator or anyone else from the city, is there anything else that we took away in terms of what contract cities are able to do in terms of supporting this model right now or any other takeaways? Is it being with C twelve? Is there anything else? The duty crews?
I'm not understanding your question.
Is there anything else? Do the cities have feedback about how this is going thus far?
Like I told you, Medina also said they need more information, so they were not even, when we said this is not enough information to make a decision on a budget. Medina agreed, said they too would like more information. If that's what you're asking?
Yeah, that, that's all I'm asking, thank you.
Okay, and then so when is the budget approved? When we have approved the budget?
So we have to approve the budget, I don't need, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, uh, it is a part of our general fund, so it has to, we do preliminary approval when we set the levy, um, in September. And then the final budget, the rest of our budget is set back in the December.
By the end of September, we have to have something to go have in our budget.
They're required to provide their preliminary numbers to us by fifteenth of August, which is tomorrow. Um, and then, uh, we have to get to, get to a solution that, uh, that you can vote on, um, by the end of September. For that preliminary document.
So that, they have, they provided us the preliminary budget?
No. They provided us preliminary, preliminary stuff at meeting. They have not formally submitted their budget yet as the contract requires, which I, I assume they will tomorrow.
So for our next council meeting, we should have that budget?
We should have that for stopping the contract, correct.
Okay.
I think the other part that, that council members who were there are talking about is, it was a general agreement from the group to continue to tweak those numbers. So I think we'll even get something, um, tomorrow. There's, there's more tweaking than just, um, particularly with things like the, their, their duty crew model. Making sure that all the contract cities, um, understand what, what that is and what that's implying. If I didn't.
That's perfect.
Yeah. And then has Dean spent?
James, yeah, and actually, um, Scott was using James. And James was like, I can't speak to duty crews. I didn't, he, he was honestly, like, we talked at our last meeting about the gas bill seemed very high. And I said it was like a rising rates. And we talked about how Station One and Station Two would have the same rising rates and they did it. And it turns out they had a meter that was broken that they didn't credit. I mean, that was, came up in the meeting, but that still hasn't made their budget. Um, let's see, I, there was some, but yeah, James was actually, well, he was without James, um, at the meeting. I think it would have been a, um, a little quieter. Yeah.
Yeah, it was very hard when he was there. It's at me.
All right, so this is. All right, thanks. Okay, well, the next one we got here is our police commission, uh, which is Councilor Benson and Councilmember Johnson. Uh, does it need to be last week or the week before?
Last week, last week of July.
Yeah, I can say there's a few things.
I have a couple things going for me, Mr. Carter. Uh, first of all, I think it was a good suggestion that we add this report to the, to our agenda. This is the first time we've done this, people were wondering about the police. But this is the first time that we've added the council committee reports, uh, which I think is a great idea. Um, but did attend the, uh, police commission, uh, meeting, a couple of takeaways from there. Uh, maybe a public service announcement is, uh, vehicle theft continues to be an issue. And so the, uh, advice is to, uh, don't leave your keys in the car. Uh, be vigilant, there were some examples of being followed. Uh, and then wait till someone gets out of the car and runs in and it's stolen. So there has been a piece of vehicle theft. And even if parking them in your garage, uh, take your keys out. Uh, in far enough away so your fob doesn't still start the car if it's in the garage. Keys are in. Um, we talked about the embedded social worker, uh, for people that are new to that. It's one of the services that was started, uh, as a trial program with the county where they have what they call embedded social worker, which is, uh, utilizing for several police departments. Uh, having a social worker available as a resource at a police department, uh, to help deal with some of, uh, the mental health issues that, uh, and kind of takes that away from, uh, the police. And they have a resource to go to. I understand she's gonna be here at a council meeting, in the next council meeting, I think, next one. So we'll get a chance to meet. Um, when she comes, it's, it's really important for us, because right now this is a county program. They've incurred their, they, we are charged a fee for it, uh, to do it. But it's important that this remains a county resource and that they continue to support it instead of, uh, pushing it back down to the cities. Uh, Hampton County is getting a significant amount of our taxes. And, uh, this is a good way to, uh, provide service to us in exchange for those taxes. Uh, but the PD did refer in a one-year time, seventy-three cases to the social worker. So it's effective, it's necessary and, uh, and the, the PD is, uh, in strong support of it. Um, I had my two nephews and niece, uh, pulled over by the police, uh, last week, uh, while riding their bikes. Uh, two of them.
Got helmet of honor?
Received helmet of honor, and got a free ice cream cone.
But they care too.
And the third one did not.
Oh.
Wow. So it was, it was a great story to hear from them. I passed things on to the chief, I hope he, I hope he passed it on to the officers, I think he did. So you're saying they missed that? Yeah, so they were riding on the road, officer.
My kids got scared too.
Yeah, hit, hit his lights and waved him over. They were worried they were, and they walked away with a great experience. So it was, uh, a good thing. And so one of the things that was mentioned in the meeting was, you know, the, the PD is committed to community outreach. Which is one of the things that they do. And so for the one officer that's here, thank you, pass that along, it was a great experience. But, uh, last thing I would say, um, you know, this is a committee that, you know, we kind of envisioned with the fire department committee with them, like, too. And I can just tell you, with our neighboring cities that were in attendance, you know, they're, they're really proud to be, um, serviced by this, uh, Orno's, uh, police department. And, uh, we had a really good conversation. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of change coming with the, uh, legalizing of marijuana. And that's affecting us on our retail level, uh, because of the sales of it. And then there's, uh, possession of both, uh, both, uh, the gummies, the apples, I guess they call it. And then there's the high potency stuff, which is a separate issue. So we've been working on that as a city as well, about zoning that. There's requirements for us to do that. Um, so overall, really good meeting. I think the community, that the community to be supported, really pleased with, uh, the level of service we're providing. And, and, uh, thanks. Thank you.
Covered most of it, I think. Um, I was really impressed as well with the community engagement piece. Looking again at, um, Chief Farniak's slide on that. The Orno police are at every, I know I saw them at the Orno High School Wellness Fair. Um, they're having coffees at Orno Woods, um, at National Night Out or Night to Unite. Um, these are individuals who are highly engaged with the community that they serve. Um, and, um, having that presence there was very much appreciated. Um, the only other thing I was gonna mention was the recruitment piece. And that's something that continues to be an ongoing challenge. There's still one open position. I believe there are gonna be interviews coming up here soon. But, um, attraction and retention in this, um, climate is, is very challenging despite Orno being a great city to work in. Um, you know, the wages being competitive of other cities, you know, with little adjustments here and there, um, can be attractive as well. So I think the recruitment or retention is, is an ongoing challenge. But I know, um, the chief is doing everything possible to, uh, address that. So that's all.
And I think we're performing exceptionally well, uh, against other communities in trying to stack. And we are down one, we have resignation of another one who was, uh, she was coming from, I wanna say it was Kimball or something, a community and the family lives there. So an opportunity came closer to her property, or to where she's from. But, um, but I think we're doing an exceptional job of, you know, uh, especially comparatively to some of this surrounding community that had some really, you know, significant deficits of shortages.
Yeah, it's true. I think the message was this is a statewide or a nationwide issue is the recruitment or retention of, um, police. So, um, it's just something to, you know, bear in mind. I don't have anything else to add.
Did, did he say that other neighboring, um, area departments were using the cadet program? Because, um, when I got on board, that was really neat to me and I don't know, that's probably part of the success?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I know we do have, and that's another slide. I'm not always gonna remind everything, but we do have a junior cadet program. And certainly the intention here, I can't speak to the communities, but it's certainly the intent, the intention to engage youth of, um, at all ages who have an interest in law enforcement and criminal justice. And it's been a good program from everything I'm standing on, so nothing positive.
Yeah. And I can answer your question. We initiated the cadet program of the police last year. Um, and, uh, the chief mocked that off of, uh, on our neighboring communities, but it was doing so.
Come on, give that a.
We already had, we already had two, two members in that, uh, program, so.
That's cool.
Very.
Kind of creates a wealth to pull from in the future.
Yes.
It's a good idea. They do a great job, that's for sure. We love that. Chief, and all the big support, people that are behind us, so appreciate that. Uh, that brings us to our mayor council report, uh, Councilor Prosky.
I'm first. Um, it was a good week last week. Uh, I took some time out and played some golf at Mark and Porter. It was awesome, loved it. Uh, ever five years of not playing the game was quite ugly. But I had a great time anyway with my son-in-law, that was fun. Um, but the fire advisory board meeting went, went as well as could be expected about the chief there. But, you know, fuck, didn't, everything was ice and simple and, you know, so those things were all pretty awesome.
Councilor Prosky.
Thank you. Yes, um, I've had the pleasure of attending a few community events recently. One of which was the, um, Long Lake Firefighters Relief Association Red Cat Fund run. Very well organized event and I appreciate, um, seeing all the community come out to support that initiative. And also I just must say that the level of commitment, um, that these firefighters continue to show to our community is outstanding. And, um, I, I really do thank, um, the Long Lake firefighters for the work they continue to do. It's incredibly important and I do hear the concerns in our community about the ongoing situation. And I share many concerns about the situation. Um, I did also attend National Night Out or Night to Unite. I rode along with one of our officers and attended several, uh, neighborhood parties. And it's just a great opportunity to be able to communicate with residents, um, hear their concerns, hear what's going on in neighborhoods and really build a strong community. And along those lines, um, I do wanna say that some folks will approach me at these events and almost apologetically wanna share some concern or idea they have, um, and, and usually preface it with, I don't wanna complain, but. And my message here tonight, um, and always going forward, is that I do, I do not view, um, any engagement or, or, um, interaction with residents as complaints. I view it as an opportunity to connect and to listen and to understand. So please do not hesitate, whether it's in passing or at an event, or after meeting, or over email or phone, or whatever the case may be, to communicate with me at any time. Um, I did wanna mention one thing, because it was mentioned earlier tonight, the Green Step Cities Initiative. Um, I heard about that during PoliCon. That is an initiative that I heard quite a lot about, um, during the annual Lake of Minnesota Cities Conference in Duluth this year. Um, it is a very successful initiative. Many of our neighboring cities actually were recognized as award winners this year for even taking a few small achievable steps towards that end. So that's something that I do have a high degree of interest in and we're always welcome the opportunity to talk about that in the future. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilor Prosky.
Now, is there a, Alan, can you give a break? I see one coming. Um, there was, uh, I was following, uh, you know, one issue, or not an issue, but it must be, had just voted on, uh, an issue surrounding, uh, their ability to provide fines. And they were having a conversation, uh, about fines. And so they, uh, still working through that, but initially it doesn't seem like they're sure that's what it is. Uh, allows them to have fines, but they're working on it, they can still litigate it. Uh, but, uh, the fine piece they were looking at. So that went to a, to a vote that didn't pass at this, at that one city meeting. So they're looking to revise that. Um, the, I think, and there is an incredible amount of wildlife. I don't know, driving around, everybody put them on deer and, uh, you know, turkeys that are out in the road in this area. And most I, I, I've seen in a long time. So I think there's, uh, there's on Adams, uh, update there with, you know, they're looking at Three Rivers to work with them to, uh, look at population control, um, and, and, uh, what things are applicable to that and it becomes, you know, a hazard at some point with the amount of deer in the area without any predators. So that's coming up. Um, and, uh, I guess that's all. Councilor Prosky.
I had a very busy week. I'm sure you're all excited to hear about it. So, yeah, I hosted National Night Out weekly, because one neighbor can't ever make it on the actual one. So we hosted that, it was awesome success, had about fifty-five people over. Um, had some music and, um, got to go see all my, um, my neighbors. So that was super fun, did that. And then, um, worked at the Cornies, um, helped cheer it up this weekend. So I was there Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So if you saw a little girl trying to jump and take it down, Ken, so that was probably me. Um, but I think it was wildly successful, um, putting, um, really warm base, but got to see, gosh, several coaches that coached me back when I was like tiny and it was such a great community event. Uh, um, got away with all my friends in the fire department. Uh, I don't, my kids were singing at church choir in the parade. My nephew was in the wrestling flow. So, um, super fun weekend for me. Um, and that's all I got. Mm-hmm. So, and you wanna see nature too, I forgot to tell you. Right after Cornies taking it down, there's two blue, bluebird houses on St. George's property that operation are made. And he opened them up and there are baby bluebirds in there. And I have never seen, I am a birder and I had never seen a bluebird. Like, oh, it was so cute. So you see a guy in red hat, that's there, he'll open it up for you.
Does he have a cornhouse?
I know, I probably, he, he only showed the two food and they were like, their caution came off because they were napping and it was the cutest thing.
Yeah, just one last thing. So, um, I had to get together with some good friends the other night and I should talk history, because it was fun. We were all having a great time and, uh, so these dogs wandered right into my backyard. It was a pretty good sized German shepherd and my wife took our dog inside, no wedge. So it had no collar, no tag, so, uh, but seemed friendly. We had some pizza crusts, of course. My dog loves pizza crusts. I figure this dog's even bigger, he'll probably love pizza crusts. He eats a pizza crust. And he, he left and, uh, you know, me and a good friend of mine were concerned about making sure we found the owner. So we were really, you know, Lewis and Clark kinda attracted and stuff. And we finally called out someone like, I don't know, quarter mile away. I had already called, you know, Orno PD and Orno PD got involved. They got to the scene and, you know, we got lucky with other neighbors and people getting involved in the community. You know, the one neighbor said, I think it's this people's dog and they're new and we don't know the dog's name. But then another neighbor came from across the street to help out. And we think we got the right dog in the right house and the right garage, because people weren't even home. But we, we were able to get their dog back for them. And it felt good, it was just like, it was a nice dog and you feel like you're an animal. It was just that it was a good feel, you know, it was cool. But, you know, with neighbors helping out, good friends and then Orno PD on top. It was just, it was cool. So, but you're right, Jerry.
Well, that's awesome. Well, I was also at a National Night Out meeting that was in Prosky, went with, uh, Police Chief Cory. And we went out to, uh, kind of our usual five, uh, five places that would go, you can only get to somebody before it gets dark and kind of start shutting down. But Orno Woods always does a absolutely fabulous show. We got a singer there, I'm saying, every year. And they got hot dogs and they got, you know, about forty, forty people sitting out there. It's the only place that's got a singer.
Ah, 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 ah. A whisperer. We have one we have too.
Or did you? So I haven't seen her.
I never saw her. It's awesome.
And we went to a Stone Bay and this is the first year they had a food truck. And so that was a great addition. Um, obviously they didn't wanna be, nobody wanted to be cooking anymore and fill up a big, uh, gazebo that they had, which is what they usually do. But that was a blast. They, which is what we usually do. But that was a blast. Orno Reserve was amazing. There were so many kids running around. There had been thirty, forty little kids that were, you know, probably under three years old. Or call them parents. That was a blast. And a lot of ice cream for the kids and all that. I said, no, we have, but they had some music anyways. Hackberry was always good. I miss the days when the helicopter used to fly into Hackberry. And you'd have hundred people out there. The kids would go down there, get in the helicopter. Because I think it was the Northern Moro Telec that would evac people out to where they needed to go. It stopped a few years ago. They don't get as many people, but they got great brats up there. So that was a good conversation. And we ended up at Fox Hill. And that's changed from the Vern's household. Where we used to be all the time to a new place. And it was great, great to see everybody there. All the fire trucks that were running around every night. And the police officers sat around every day. It was perfect weather. We couldn't ask anybody about the weather. That was great. Also, then if you get to Corn Days, I had a golf tournament that morning. We got to Corn Days, got some corn, got every Mexican corn. My daughter did run in the Corn Days race and took fifth place for the, in the women's category. She's in cross country here in Orno. Most of us are just starting. So she was excited. For the taxi, she was just starting the cross country. She was like a sprinter, two hundred, four hundred. So. Coming up here Wednesday is Coffee with the Mayor. We had a move in a week because last week was my birthday. So we're not doing it on this coming Wednesday. So nine o'clock, we have coffee and we have donuts. So definitely come and, come and say hi. And everyone seems to have a good conversation, that's for sure. We did have a Safe City, it's called Safe City. It's some kind of group that puts together the safest cities in Minnesota. Came out again this year. We're, we took a seventeenth place, the seventeenth safest city in Minnesota. And that is kudos to all of our police department, first responders, public works, fire department, all that stuff, all those hand in hand. And we have a great community also that gets together, goes out and sees everybody. So it's one of those deals where you see something, you say something, and they would, and that's kind of community as well. So we take pride in making sure that we are a safe city because that's, that's what helps out our neighbors. So with that, I'll end with a couple of quotes. Elon Musk was on my line. So I have a couple of quotes from Elon. He says, "One, never. I don't ever give up. I have to be dead or completely incapacitated. For my heart, I will never give up, and I mean never." And the second one I thought was good. He said, "I'd rather be optimistic and wrong than pessimistic and right." So with that, motion butchered.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're right, Sheriff. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Happy birthday.
Thanks. Mr. Crosby. Yeah, any state, no problem. President of the United States, he's over there. He must be there.
Yeah, we're there. We need to.
Is he there, Mr. Crosby? Okay, is he there? Because we all, we all find ourselves.
Yeah, we're going through a. So we, the chief did it. Your supporting faces.
Yeah. I know it's a rough environment.
Because you're in a city that you're. It was. Oh, I did that. We're, we're. So everybody deserves a piece of. So that was, that was during. So that was one of the. See all the conferences you're talking about. I don't understand. You don't know your man's. You shouldn't be. Uh, let's. No, I should be here. You don't be here. No, I'm here. That those were. You have zero. Yeah, no. You don't care about anyone but you. Uh, yeah, or you can just. Don't ask me to test. You have zero. Yeah.
It's time, though, maybe not. Maybe it's not like, but it's time to start. You're thinking about how you're going to deal with it. You're going to, you're running it out.
Yeah, and so much of this is focused on.
So we didn't. Not a lot of. So many people said aye. So many questions.
Well, I think, all right, that's.
We looked at the form on the website.
Discussing. I know it's from the. And so.
Yeah, and with the.
So. Talking about any of this. I've got a question for you. They were talking about the, like, sheriff's. So, but isn't it the same thing? Make sure you can't build your ass.
You are not.
Your property, you just have. Look at a world. We have.
It's a fail. It's just like having a break. It's your house. So many of them. Chief.
But I mean, so you, maybe they were to.
We're not.
Yeah, yes, because they would have. There's just, I mean, they might have. What was property or what's not property, those are.
And if, if it's. You can't.
It's not so much that back, but it's a special weather that back, the frost effect that was applied additionally.
So you have, you're finding out how since. You were.
Yeah. If you're having three hundred feet back and your neighbor had a similar law and they want.
It's, it's one of the, it's one of the mayor. I'm here to try to. You get not right up front. So.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so the court decision was an old lady.
It's not about pushing. Making people feel bad for wanting to put their backs. I think it's just that.
I know. I don't want to.
No, but as you see. People. Building, building, always trying to. Probably. That. Culture. More intensive. You want to protect that.
So I'm getting like a. Discussion. Making that, making.
Yeah, but it's just so hard to find that law and write that.
Right, but people, there were only twelve applications not through the end of January. I mean, what else are you going to do this with, son? I mean, that's.
Oh, we're busy.
That's what, that would be one application. I mean.
So. Just me and me have.
Thank you for being there.
And that is so. None of them are late.
No. No, but you know what? I would. Your setback. No, but, but this is a high percentage.
I think it's a dangerous area.
It's, it's a hard term. I agree. It's a hard needle to thread.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So it's a special level. Yeah. Thanks, Vera. Yeah, thank you. Uh, no. Now, it could happen. Let me grab my. It won't. Yeah, I would.
But either way, that's not my mediation this year. We have to try to do that. We do this to try. Like, it's like.
I read the, the. It, it's to try, the litigation is to try to. The judge is saying, try, the best thing you can do is to try, is to try to run this out together. She says in there like, every time, there's no justification, you're starting to go very far.
No, they said, so what an injunction is, she doesn't have to.
I, it's not. I know what it is.
She knows what it is.
I do. I know what it is. I, I, I know exactly what you meant. So you know, inside out and outside out.
No, I cannot say.
Oh, okay. But the adjustment does read as though. Yeah, it says very specifically that y'all need to come to an agreement. Find common ground, get to an agreement. It doesn't say just provide the department, start your own department. It doesn't say that. The judge doesn't say that. It doesn't say that.
I understand that.
So there is an opportunity for this to stop. It just won't. And that is because they want their own department though.
Well, I'm very vague. So that's not, I mean.
I mean, Maria, this, this has been a four-minute conclusion for a decade.
It's actually what happens.
Yeah, so like, I mean, so and it's because Orno, they have no justification, which is why I said repeatedly, there's no reason why it should be done because there's. There's no. It's this thing that I don't like. You're upset that, that a lot of things need to roll over and take, and just take it from them. It's really. They just want a lot of. They want their own department. And they want to get a number on under any services. And that's why.
I am vague, I guess.
Well, then you are vague. That is the fake. Orno believes they should be in control of the department. And that's the way it's going to be, no matter the cost of the taxpayers, no matter the cost of the department, no matter the cost to the families that are serving the department, if none of that stuff matters. None of it matters. Because you can't answer. You can't answer the questions, Maria. You can't. Why are we doing this?
Well, I can't right now tell you anything more.
Well, because it doesn't exist, Maria. Because we're going to get here and they're going to. Maria, it's a lie.
That's, Kel. No, it's not.
Tell me then.
I told, I just told.
Tell me anything that makes sense.
I'm trying to talk.
Okay, go ahead.
I just told you. Because a litigation, we can't see anything right now.
That wasn't true. But Maria, I've been asking these questions before. You were a gleam in their eye. And they couldn't ask those questions.
I'm sorry.
Maria, it's not that you can't answer.